November to make the report and so, you know, just the same old every day in and out. We, this, this, well, I guess it would have been November and October. We did not have October any. So we, we reapply the EMDG grant and that's an extensive process that I have to go through to apply for that. But I did get that done and I did get it submitted the first of December. For my CLIM certification, which is state mandated, I had to do several online courses. So I've been doing those this past month. We did attend a winter weather exercises with Division G out of Cleveland. And the main thing that I wanted to let you guys know is I did come here about storm shelters. We did not get it in our hands. Yes, we did not get it. So I spoke with our representative for our division and kind of went over with her and she said, you know, the best thing, the best piece of that, she said, she can give us just continue to reapply. And so, you know, I asked her, I said, if you will specifically pull our applications and look at it and see. And she said, well, it's not, it's not, it's not based on whether you completed it properly or not. It's based on several, several circumstances and it's just luck of the draw. We did not get it. So when it comes available again, of course I'll be reapplying. I was so sad.
Can I talk about why our area is one of the few that's not being given the grants for storm shelters?
Yeah. She cannot tell me. She just said it was statewide and that I think there was only like 2 million for that grant cycle though. So 2,600 counties is not a great deal, but.
As you say, it's so many of them, you know, that's surrounding us that aren't giving them. You would think at least that would look at us.
I thought we were going to get this one, honestly. I really did. I was so disappointed. But it included, you know, applied for three, the three storm shelters and then Mike and I worked on the generator for the April station, which was, is very, very important to them. So anyways, we'll be gearing up for the next one, ready to go. So I was disappointed in that.
Okay. You got fitting on here and dresses issue?
Sadly, issue in the dresses.
There's five. How's it been building a mile or anything?
Yeah. We get requests several a week. So, you know, we changed the process to go through the engineer's office first. So that's been, that's been working out for us. So, and that was just November. I didn't include December. I meant October on that. So, yeah, we, the good thing about the addressing now is that our new system, we don't have to go out as much as we were having to go out sometimes. We still do. We kind of put our eyes on it, but it's just much easier with the new, matching system.
Crystal, with the fire association and the forestry, you know, the burn control, are we putting that out also through another one that we've got a burn ban in?
We did. Anyone that contacts our agency, we have them. If they're doing any type of burning, we have them contact forestry directly. And that's even when we're not, even not during the burn ban, that way they can get a permit through them. So yes, we are. A lot of people not listening.
You know, I called the burn permit once and they said that you didn't have to have a permit unless you're burning more than what happened.
I'm not really sure what they, what they say.
I was kind of shocked.
Pretty much.
I'd like to burn in the fire.
Yeah.
That's what I mean to happen.
I just wanted to make sure of that because we was going to burn a big pile. It was a small. They said you don't have to have a permit for that.
Right. And usually, you know, because when it gets to the weather, of course, everyone wants to burn. But usually they'll log those on the board. But if they, it's going to be significant.
A lot of cooperation on one side. Anyway, the last time I got one, forestry folks come over and tried to shut down my guy and I said, no, I got a permit. And he said, well, nobody told me. I said, I reckon I gotta tell you. I called a burn again and they didn't know that.
Wow. Any other questions for Crystal?
No, but they need to know that, that they're all, it is under the burn control. If it's been banned now, they're writing tickets.
Yeah, we have, we have.
I think it's left in there too.
It's left in there. But those tickets were.
We, now during the burn ban, yes, we, we had issues with residents, but we would send a deputy out there or an officer, whatever jurisdiction it was in.
Do you think that DECA would have any money for storm shelters?
No, I don't deal a lot with the DECA. Most of the grants that I go through, of course, are through the state EMA.
Well, they encourage us to ask for money. I was just curious, looking at checks kind of.
Yeah. I never, I don't guess I've ever applied for a DECA grant. I usually, like I said, we usually mine are through the state, on the board, the state EMA, VHS grants, things like that.
I have a vacancy this fall.
Oh, no, it's right here.
I don't mind this.
No, 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 no. That's what, that's what I want to ask and say.
You gotta have somebody having alcohol and good drinks like that. You gotta have somebody drive. Lee and I are going to talk about, about some grants when it'll be.
Just to be quite honest, I mean, with the grant work, I have my plate absolutely full with that. I don't know, I don't usually have a grant writer for the ones that I do. But, you know, I think I explained to you guys on the last, on the storm shelter, it took me weeks, weeks to get that information. So anyways, if we could, you know, go through East Alabama or wherever, or whatever county.
I think East Alabama's in due, but he like, we looking at a couple of grants that kind of, but we need a grant. And he's got a guy and I got a lady. We'll talk about it next week.
Anything else for Crystal? Mr. Owen?
Yeah.
All right, good.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All fair and sane.
Uh.
She cares. We'll call our Cleveland County Commissioners Court. We want to welcome everybody. Thank y'all for coming. It's time to roll call. Lauren Cobb.
Here.
In the open.
Here.
Terry Hendricks.
Here.
Roger B.
Here.
I think, Ms. Cobb, if you don't mind saying a question after the pledge.
Salute me. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you for having us here tonight. And I pray that you're just leading God as to make Godly decisions, Father. Father, just be with us through this holiday, uplift our spirits. We, I'll remember what Christmas is all about, Father. And I just pray that you're leading God us through the holidays. Keep us safe. Take everyone safe home tonight, Father. Father, I pray that you will be with those that are with a heavy heart right now, Father, that you just uplift them. Just lead in God's, in Jesus' name. Amen.
We have Mr. Cody Shelton who's coming to speak on behalf of Grace and Peace Church and Peace Church who actually rents through JSU over there. And I think most of y'all may be familiar with Cody. Cody happens to be my son-in-law.
Oh, Cody. I told him to keep it down to 25 minutes.
Because he'll never live.
There's a quote that says, I didn't have time to write you a short letter, so I wrote you a long one instead. But that ain't true of me. I wrote a short one for Lee. It was going to be. Good evening. Merry Christmas. I think it must be humbled. I'm Cody Shelton, the pastor of Grace and Peace Church. As I mentioned, we lease, I don't know what's I call that side of the building?
Jack State side.
The Jack State side of the building. I'm here not to offer a fuss or critique at your ice meeting for Christmas. I come in peace and hopefully with an offering. Our church has now been used in the mountain center for our worship space since February 2022. It's surprising I wrote that down, but almost two years. Since then, I have mentioned countless times how much a blessing it is for us to be able to use this particular space. Since I had not taken time yet to make you guys particularly aware of that, I thought it was time to do so. Due to the nature of our gathering, the fact we eat together each week, and the geographical proximity of this building, I mention that because we have folks coming from Jacksonville and folks come from Carrollton. So it's a decently central location for us. It's been an ideal for us. Since we only leased the space, it has afforded us plenty of margin financially to help those in need in the community. The rate of JSU charges is very fair. To be honest, that'd be pretty just targeted a bit more. For example, since November 30th, so basically the past three weeks, we have been able to assist in nearly $9,000 of assistance to those in need in our community. From helping provide Christmas, the children of the local head start, to buying a car for a single mom, to purchasing an HVAC unit, and propane for families without heat. The margin we've been afforded for use of this space has not gone underappreciated. I hope not misappropriated or without reciprocation to those in need. I was going to give you guys a list of all the numbers because it was beautiful, but I thought the last three weeks will capture that pretty well. I mentioned this to you in hopes that you see the type of people, the type of renters even, we want to be. It has been a great benefit to us to be able to leave coffee pots, a drum set, a mixing board, and chairs set up nearly every week. Mainly due to the nature that there's not a lot of rentals in that building, or that side of the building. That being said, we would certainly celebrate more use of this space, even if it means more time on Sundays carrying down, setting up for us. So much of our financial margin is directly related to the reality that we don't have to pay mortgage, a power bill, a fee for janitorial service, et cetera. Because of that, I wanted to come in person to say we'd be glad to carry more responsibilities than a typical leaser. I've talked to him and someone about this and I meant to talk to Lisa some about this as well. If we can buy an ice machine, upgrade kitchen appliances, or have supplement to cost of plumbing repair, we're more than glad to do that. We have acquired some land in Random on Penrose 10. We've got the timber cleared and are just now starting the molding and grading. But we imagine we're still a while away from being in our home building because we're trying to do it all debt-free. And we want to make sure it's expressed in word and deed how much we appreciate and benefit from the use of this space. To that end, this is no particular order, but Commissioner Cobb, Commissioner Owen, Commissioner Hendricks, Commissioner Hill, Judge Robinson, Lisa Kepplin, on behalf of our church, thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Cody? And I mean, I know he mentioned possibly the church would like to help in some way.
Well, I know the churches, you know, paid for the buffing and the waxing of the floor and stuff like that. But I think a lot of it with our lease with Jack State is one of the, we have a lease with Jack State. Most of the stuff is going to have to work their way through them, is for my understanding. I know we're still, are we somewhere further along with the lease with Jack State?
We haven't gotten back to it yet. And it's right now, it's hard for anybody to get on the same page with holidays going on. We're pretty busy, but we just need to circle back around with that.
That's the next thing we're working on, trying to figure out the lease. They don't, you know, they feel like, you know, they don't use it as much, but, you know, they don't try to market it either.
They don't.
And we've offered to try to market it. And, you know, at that point, you know, if they would market, usually through the holidays, we usually have a lot of people over there using it. And I know the leadership group met up over there first part of the week and the last, sort of end of last week, Thursday. And I told them that this here was to be used for weddings, for anybody in the county, or anybody that wanted to lease that building, which that lease money goes to Jack State. And, you know, any damages or anything that others, other side, normal wear and tear would go to Jack State if something happens. And so when you got a lease with somebody, you, you pretty much gotta follow in that direction. That's pretty common. Me and you talk, if, if you want to help on things like that, we would have to do it through Jack State. Because this is the same as here this time of year, me and you can too. And we just, you know, when it gets into that, we will sort of establish public weight runs when it's kind of.
Yeah.
About where we are with it.
I get the impression that it's just a matter of getting circled back around and getting to an agreement. I actually had emailed Pete last week about the leadership group being over there on Thursday. And he sent me a form back to have anybody that wants to use that room. He just wants to account for the time that's being used and said that he was looking forward to us starting to use the building for. So I, I don't get the impression that there's any problem. It's just a matter of getting everybody on the same page.
And y'all, I mean, y'all, y'all keep it set up great. I mean, you keep it set up great, you know, as far as for it being used. Only thing is, like you were saying, it'd have to be broke down and other people starts leasing it. And that's the reason I brought it up to our leadership committee, if anybody want to have weddings and stuff like that. Most times it's just chairs in a line and tables in a line. And other than just some plank cranes on the wall and stuff like that, it's about the only thing we're going to do. And you got, and now, you know, and the thing about it, I look at it this way, what was originally I think it's going to be used for is for education from, for our elementary schools. So you can just imagine, it's going to run on the big thing, whether it's the church, whether it's school classes or whatever, with young kids, that's what's going on sometimes.
Well, it has been a tremendous benefit to us. I want to make sure we leave it better than we found it. So if really anything y'all can find, that I want to make sure after we leave here, which I hope we get out there, you know, as soon as we can, that it is a benefit. And when we're gone, you can say, yeah, this is better than close when they got here.
And they, they won't let me use cranes anymore.
I don't want to mention.
I could tell it was fine if you could tell it was blowed too.
That was a call. You have to laugh. Never a few of you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
We're proud of anybody.
Yeah, thank y'all. I think you had something. Patrick speaking on behalf of the chair.
So John is on week two of trying to recover from the flu. His son had the flu last week. He ended up with it and they ran a paper through the weekend. So we kind of asked him to stay away from us for a few more days at least. So what I've got for y'all, and I don't know how, how y'all want to handle it. We had a vehicle to get totaled out. One of our hardship guys had a wreck and ended up total vehicle. I think John had talked to him and John had initially was going to present this. However, we feel like it's urgent and we've got an opportunity. So the insurance company Crawford will be cutting us a check or where it was coming from will be cutting us a check for $19,324.93. I have sent a itemized invoice on upping to Crawford for $10,920. And she has the, it's been, it's been a nightmare dealing with this particular adjuster. We have put a rush on it, tried to get some answers by tonight, but it was just impossible. So I'm waiting to hear back on out of that $10,320, what they will be giving us for the upping side of the Tahoe. But we're still in a vehicle crunch. This really hindered us because it seems like when we start having one problem, that it just trickles. And it's not a problem. It's a good thing. We did hire our third SRO, which started today. So we had to give him a vehicle and we're, I had to pull a vehicle, that old Explorer, that 13 Explorer out from the junkyard and put it back on the road. The three Explorers, I do have, one of those is on the lot. The two are on the rail. But to answer for when they're going to be prepared, I can't tell you. And I told, I asked him that today. They still can't give me a straight answer. Even with those three Explorers, I need this vehicle. Buster Miles has got one. The price tag on it is $22,340. I feel like we can talk with him and get, and I've talked with him a little bit and he is willing to help us on a little bit of that cost. I'm not sure how much that cost is. However, that's what sticker price it is. It's for a 2020 Tahoe with 81,000 miles on it, which we feel like we can still get a lot more use out of the vehicle. We also will be, if we could use this insurance money to purchase that vehicle, we also will be using some of the equipment out of that 17 Tahoe because from year 2015 to year 2020, the equipment interchanges. So our idea is, is to use as much of that equipment out of that 2017 to go into that Tahoe. Yes, sir. Is this vehicle pursuit right? Yes, it is. It's one of the vehicles that they had purchased from another agency that actually, the only thing that they've done to it was took the console out of it and put a regular console. But it is pursuit right. Yes, sir.
What's the mileage on it?
Eighty-one thousand. Eighty-one thousand. And like I said, I feel like that man will, will help us a little bit on that. I'm just not sure how much, you know, they're in the business to make money as well. But he did, he did, he did mention, and when we were addressing the vehicle problem a while back with you guys, you know, it was very hard for us to find new vehicles. Buster's have had, has had a few of these vehicles come through their lot. And now they're down to one, a white one and one black one. So I feel like, and John also feels like it's kind of, you know, if, if we're going to go this route and if we can use this insurance money for us to go ahead and be able to get the authority to be able to replace. And we could probably have this vehicle on the road in a little amount of time versus those Explorers. If they were sitting here, we're probably still two to three months away from even getting them on the road. So we're severe crunch right now.
When will you think you receive the check for 19,000?
Well, I've got to get with Lisa. They've got, we've got to pull the title. And then once we get the title, then they'll send the power to turn. I know she's probably more up on that, that they've got to sign as soon as, and we got the equipment out of it Saturday. I spent all Saturday morning for all the equipment out of it. So they're aware that it's ready to be released. So as soon as they send me the paperwork to get to Lisa and to be able to send the title, I would assume that that process would be fairly quick. But I've got the declaration here. The actual, what they value, the, this was a 2017 with 180, with 182,000 miles on it. And they valued it, valued it at $21,824. However, with our deductible being $2,500, that's what the check would be for the $19,324. However, like I said, we still, I did send them the itemized, the itemized list on the upping. So I do feel like, I don't know that they'll give us that whole amount. However, I do feel like that we will receive some proceedings of that $10,000. So, yes, sir. So you're asking for a resolution to be able to spend the insurance. Correct. Yeah, that's the premium addition. It shouldn't take, what I, in, in reality of it, it's going to cause, because Buster's would have to do the upping to do it professionally, to do it right. I could do it, but I would love it if they were right. You could probably put one series and the windows would roll down. However, there's nothing really new that we want to have. It's more so going to be the labor cost on the upping. There may be some of the little lights that's out of date that they might not be get wired back up. For the most part, I feel like that we could be even in the upping for less than 5,000. So if we did, if we could get at least 5,000 out of that 10,000 along with, I feel like that we could probably not have any money in it. If, if there is any money, it'd be very little. And I'm talking with Paula and talking with John, we feel like that we would have a little bit of product over that because it would be a very small plan. I'm just asking basically to be able to use this insurance money for the total vehicle. So.
Mr. Cobb. I know the 10,000, you're trying to get part of that because if you sign that for that 19, then that's going to end.
So now they, what they, what they have, we agreed on the 21,000, John and we agreed on the 21,824. However, when they said that, they told, they asked us for additional paperwork for the 10,000. So it's going, they would have to approve that additional. So we, I mean, we don't, we don't love it. We'll get a dollar of it. But she said the adjuster feels like that they will approve some amount. And I, I think rightfully so.
Just kind of argue with her. Just don't let them.
No, we, we.
I wouldn't sign until they gave me something.
Yeah. And I think you was first.
Well, I think it's hard that we've been through these vehicles. I don't want to miss the opportunity, at least buying it. You always come back to us once it's said and done to us.
I honestly feel like that we won't need any extra money.
Right. And John told me that probably chance we're looking at that additional money. But I'd like to add, to let them be able to use that $19,000 to the agenda tonight.
You had something?
It's, what the 10,000 is, is what they call supplemental. Like when you tear down a car and you find something that went on the estimate. So I mean, that's the standard operating there. So.
Hopefully what my goal is tonight is to be able to tell Buster's, yes, we want to purchase this vehicle, negotiate the price with it, be able to purchase it. And then hopefully that 10,000 will come in. And then I'm going, I'm going to venture out and say, and this is not John's, this is Patrick's word, that we won't be asking y'all for any additional money. We will be able to find money if it's anything beyond what the cost is, beyond what insurance gives us.
Just keep us on the radar for anything against Buster Miles like that because with our SRO officers and mailboxes and deer and everything. It would be bad if we find a car that's 81,000 who's voice rated. We even take a look at it.
I wouldn't want the insurance company to know that I've said this, but it's really a blessing to us to be able to, we're taking a 2017 that was probably not on the transmission and a motor at some point and being able to get a 2020 or 81,000 mile. I think in, you know, typically they've got that 17 value more than the 21, or the 2020. So and like I said, I don't know, you know, if y'all need to add it in business, but that's, that's our request. And like I said, I wanted to also tell y'all about the SRO. We're very thankful for that. He certified, started today. He will be training with us up until school starts back in January. So.
All right. So you wanted to add something?
Yeah, I wanted to add that collecting half of 19,000 dollar insurance check go towards the purchase of the 20 mile base unit.
Let's make, there's a motion. You have a second?
Second.
Ms. Cobb, let's make.
Why don't you just say towards the purchase of another vehicle instead of, let's see if they give it.
Okay, purchase of another vehicle. I'm good with that.
You have an amendment? You give you that amendment? Okay. We're going to make that E.
We're just adding it to the general.
Right.
That would be, G I S must be.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay. Let's make that F. I've got to keep consulting on the last guy to add that too.
So we're.
So this will be F. Let me, any other discussion on this?
Yeah. So we don't know when the 19,000 dollar check come in. If that thing's setting down, I'd just like to be able to go ahead and purchase the vehicle and then 19,000, we just go back to the first.
I will forward it and actually.
You'll go.
Actually, I'll give Lisa this copy. This is the copy direct from Crawford. It states the 21,824, but like I said, keep in mind the $2,500 to double. But that's right from Crawford there. And next month, well, I'll get y'all the VIN number. We'll have to surplus that bid, but I want to make sure the insurance or sell the insurance, not let the four guys to surplus the bid.
Is officer okay?
He's fine with this one. He's fine. Mike, before we get out of this, I'll just say we're adding this to the agenda as F. Say hi.
Hi.
She cares.
That's the truth. Is that deductible to cover that over 10,000?
It would be all, it would be all in, the, the $2,500 took off the top. So hopefully we.
Say one more thing? We'll get it done anyway. So you don't come back, but we don't have to do another. Can I say one more thing? Well, we're going to go anyway. So you don't come back, but we don't have to do another resolution for the ten thousand vehicle?
If y'all could include that in that resolution, we'd need a reason to come back.
We'll talk about that when we go, when we, well, we amend it again. And I just want, we'll keep talking about the money. We can, I.
I made note that it's to authorize the use of insurance proceeds to purchase replacement vehicle.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
I'll get back.
Come on up, Mr. Dowd.
Yes. Just real quick, we wanted to let y'all know that we've got the new corner vehicle, got everything going on there. Took it out today to the shop. Built a nice platform in the back. Got the carpet. It looks better than anything we have ever had. So thank y'all for that. Everything looks good on there. Got my life transferred over from the suburban. I've got a few more things to get out of the suburban, but other than that, it's ready to be surplused out. Everybody y'all handle that. I'll handle that. Get Lisa on that soon.
Is that the one that come from Calhoun County?
Yes, that's the one that we got from Calhoun County. I've got it out at the Camden Barn now. It's sitting in Leeds Way. I just got it out there where it can stay locked up at night behind the chain link fence. Old animals, I've already given it back to Tracy. Did he get in touch with you about the title on that? We took, had it took up to Brooks for them because y'all knew we were going to surplus it back to EMS. So they got to get Brooks looking through it, see what they need to do there. But just once, I got a few more things. I got to make time to get out there and get out of the suburban and I'll be done with everything. All swapped over and ready to go.
So it's ready to surplus?
Yes, ma'am. It's ready to surplus. Just take me fifteen, twenty minutes, one day, find the lock, finish getting rest of the stuff I got.
Will it be the next month anyway?
I'm just going to leave it. It's okay to leave. Just leave it out at the, the barn where it's sad and locked up and in a good place. But the human is absolutely one of the rides. Looks a lot better, rides a lot better, very affordable. He put some, I think he got some carpet from Fred that was down in the shore building there where the morgue was and put it in the back. Built on either side. So a lot better than it was. Just wanted to thank y'all for that. Year to date, I've got, worked my feet to get the call this morning, year to date. This past week I had, or this past month, I did have two other calls. Sir, assist another agency and making debt notifications for people here in Camden. They were out of Camden focus. So that's what we set there.
Have you reached out to our other corners about pulling all our records together and to put it in the office down there by the dock you got now?
I have, I do have most of Rudy's old records and most of Edeline's old records there. Tracy gave him what he had. I just don't have them down in the hole yet because I've got to sort through them and kind of put them. I've thought to make a place for them in the closet over there. But I do have records from Edeline, Rudy and Tracy and Ben when he was corner.
We got some file cabinets here or there. I think I got some in my shop. I mean, if you need some file cabinets.
Okay. Actually, I don't know if y'all remember the timeframe when Mr. Histies was the corner for that four years. But his daughter actually reached out to me one day at the funeral home and asked me, said she had all of the records from when he was corner, back there in that four year timeframe. And she's supposed to be getting those too. And it's just one of those things she hadn't done yet. But she told me that I could have those to put with the other files. So at that point, we should be pretty much able to go back to any case. You know, there's going to be some that's missing throughout. May not have got logged in like it should have. But you know, now with everything, I, I go out and I put it, I write it all down handwritten. And then when I get back, since we got laptops and the tablets, I'll put it on that database phone that we got, print it off and then put it in the file cabinet that we got down there now. So I've actually got a handwritten copy and a computer generated copy there.
I tell you, you've really turned it around with your office and I know Tracy kept it for the morgue and everything. So it's really turned out.
Everything, yeah. That's why I told someone that we really were sitting a lot better than a lot surrounding Camden. So I talked to some, you know, friends where everybody, you talk to some of the other corners just down around off Camden. He barely does get a payday a lot of times, you know, he don't have actual.
We can work on that. We can work on keeping that payday.
We don't need to do that. But y'all got any questions for me?
Well, I have a question for you. I have one for Lisa. I think we passed that resolution, in the resolution was to surplus those vehicles. So.
I think we did. I think it's already been passed out to surplus. That's just whatever we need to do. I mean, you let me know what I need to do other than be getting mine.
Just tell us we can do that.
Yeah. That'll be done, that'll be done by the end of the week.
You got some more on?
One thing is we need to take the insurance off the vehicles and take them off market. That's it.
Got you. It's, but it's just all for a company at all. So. It's just, this week's going to be crazy trying to find them. Thank y'all. I appreciate you. So y'all, then you got another?
See, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Yeah.
I think that gets us all. No V A O anything for representation. No, it's probably. Consent agenda. Everything was initial to the contingent except for the appointment to a board. I think it's hospital board will live that to D. And I make the motion to accept the rest of it.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor of passing the contingent? Motion carries. Moving to new business. Memorial to Vice Young Inspection Shed. Where respect trooper, Corporal Joe Ladders had approached the Clinton County Commissioning to request support and honor the state troopers. Vice and Young that have been lost, therefore be resolved by Clinton County Commission. Supports the effort to the state troopers with the name of the inspection shed, the way station on I-20 located in Clinton County. Vice Young, the inspect, inspection shed as memorial of their dedication to service.
I second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I B, where is Clinton County engineer is requested to be allowed to build a chip spreader. Therefore, the Clinton County Commission agrees to allow the county engineer to bid on equipment up to, we'll need a price when we make that motion.
So right now, the one that was in Pennsylvania, so, so I don't, I don't want to all say. I've got two others that I'm, that I'm kind of looking at. One of them is seven thousand, one ninety thousand. What I was kind of intending on doing with that resolution is if we say, because you know, I don't know how these two is going to work out either group. If we say we put a cap on it at a hundred and twenty thousand or whatever, might exceed. That way, as I kind of go through these and I, I find something that would work or is there, I just want to be able to go ahead and pour the trigger on it. Not be in the same position where I let a group of slide by.
And you're saying, how much is that?
Hundred twenty. I ain't looked at nothing over that. It's kind of what I'm getting at. Some reason I say that, I look at some one tens, some one fifteens and.
So you're looking at the famous back to your.
Through my, my credit begins.
Where's the, um, payback?
A lot.
In the hole, a lot.
Yes. Seven hundred and some. Last time I checked, maybe more than that now.
But we are going to sell a lot of stuff from March and March auctions as well too. It ain't going, it's going to make a pretty good size deal in that. They ain't going to pay it all off by any means, but.
But it couldn't have?
It's going to come three hundred thousand. It may not quite get a half, but it'll come real close to it.
I think I checked for it. One question for everyone, everything else.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it too.
And the motion would be for a hundred and twenty thousand, right?
I don't really got a thing to say on that.
From you to say. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
You said aye too. Motion carries.
I'll give the list to my roots.
No, I've got a list.
Well, we got to get one first, guys. You expect the money to run out.
You busy. So I would say, where is Clinton County engineer is requesting the purchase of a chip spreader. Where is the catch? We no longer need the existing chip spreader. He requests the surplus of this item. Two thousand nineteen cell master chip spreader, E two, three, three, zero, dash, one, nine, four. Therefore, the Clinton County Commission, he will offer us a surplus of the old chip spreader.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, you plan on getting rid of this one before you get, so you don't have.
So, so what this one right here is, this is actually, this is not the only one that we've been using to do the roads. This is a tailgate mounted that just mounts on the back of the duck truck. The work is not.
Okay.
I'm not going to get rid of the, so, well, until I have something to fix this one.
And so then you'll also get rid of that one?
Once that time.
That's one I truly not getting because we're still.
Well, that's mine.
Project.
What do you think of Brian?
That one, it's, it's a nice one. You will probably see between ten, twelve hours.
Can we amend that to whatever it sells for, to put it towards the hundred and twenty?
Well, it would, but. It may always go as anywhere, but yes.
Go back to his, to pay off his.
Either way.
Either way, it's.
That's, that's what would happen anyway sometimes. But highway traffic, trying to play that, to play that mind. So that's.
Who, I can't hear. Do you make a motion on this one?
You made a motion.
Yeah, thank you. You give them, add that amendment that didn't understand.
I agree with you that it goes, it goes back to paying off his costs.
Okay. You give that?
I'm very good with it.
All right. Noted. All right, ready to vote. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
You said aye too. Yeah. Motion carries.
Let's start raising. What are the motions?
Well, y'all saying free and tight, you know. That concludes consent's in the rock. No, I mean, that can, the new business, I'm sorry. Appointment to board, I'm just trying to get out of your mind. Appointment to board and hospital, that goes to D. I'm going to check motion out.
Sorry.
And the motion is?
You got somebody?
It's added. It's added. I'm happy. It's consent, consent. You said you would add something to that. Did you have an appointment?
I don't have any, any money. I just, I want to feel aware that if I had an opening.
Okay, okay.
So the resolution will be board vacancies, hospital board, district two and district four. That's the reasonable reason to vote this game.
I don't know. You said district two?
It said district two on the consent.
No, it's still on. We got two.
Do you have one that's coming off? Do you have one that's coming off?
Sure, I'm sure it's going on. Well, I'll call Spirit.
Well, it, it, it's, be, be back on the contingent if it dials for lack of motion, right? So it just dials for lack of motion. All right. Moving on to, we're looking at E. I need to add this one. The Key, or the, um, the Key Consulting, concerning this, how did you say that? Anything to read on that resolution?
That it would be to accept the recommendation of the Secretary of State's office to join the Key Consulting Services contract for the period of two years as stated and authorize the chairman to sign the application.
So entertain adding this.
I second it.
All right. So the motion to add, second. All in favor to add, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now let's look on voting for it.
I'll make it.
Motion second. Any discussion concerning this? Well, I mean, go ahead. How much your hand is at? You put two years on there. I think we need to put a date because two years is going to run past for a free date.
It's just what was stated in the letter.
Yeah. I think we need to make it like a month before the free runs out and it needs to come back to the commission to re-discuss. Haven't paid that monthly fee.
Shouldn't our.
Go ahead.
Shouldn't our, uh, two years start when it's online? They go free if they don't come online.
It goes until July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
You don't necessarily get ten years. You get until that day.
I know. Mine ain't come online until that.
Then you won't get nothing for it. So it needs to come back to us.
Okay, I agree with you.
All right. So you're meaning it, then it'll end in what July?
Probably do it in June so that you have it come up on July.
Thirty or sixty days before it runs out. June of two thousand twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
Meaning the motion. You give that?
Yes.
That's understood. That's nobody. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. You or I want to impress her. Moving to the insurance check on F. I'll, can you reach up and forward there?
The motion's to authorize use of the insurance proceeds to the Sheriff's Department total vehicle to produce, to purchase a replacement vehicle.
Make the motion.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Let it go ahead. That was, because we added earlier. Kind of got a stamp there and kind of added earlier. All right. Court two stands. Yes, Kim.
My fries, ma'am.
Sorry.
I'll be here a minute too.
I wish I had it. For you.
I'm basically spending a lot of time. I've been on my injuries right now. I was without my helmet for a few weeks. So that kind of put a little wrench in the deal, but we're good now. Working hard. I've been talking to board education. They requested some more detail, a breakdown of sales tax that was collected by the county and trying to make sure that they're, they're getting their part of the sales tax. And I have sent that over to them. The only way to work it any further is actually, I've been, we've talked about that before. That's not, you're not supposed to do that. You're not supposed to give out bigger information like that. So I have provided what I have to Melissa and I have not heard any more questions about it. As they come up, I'll, I'll answer whatever they, they have to say. You all received an email about the Verizon issues. I've been in businesses at Verizon. They had an issue with their software that was calculating the sales tax that they pay the county and other counties and cities as well incorrectly. And when they signed a petition for a refund, they were turned down by Avenue because they had not corrected the problem and they continued consistently filed it incorrectly. So it was turned down at that time. So now they have filed a claim to try to get that money. It's, it's not eleven hundred dollars. It's not a crazy amount of money. It's just that we want to make sure that it's, you know, that we actually owe that money before we send a check out for that. And it's happened a couple of times where we've had refunds that we always make sure the records are in place to make sure that that person actually, or that vendor actually did pay that money to us before we send anything back. So let's, I'm working on that a little bit.
Thank you. Question. Did you go to the ACCC right?
Yeah, I did send their email out to them just to see if they had heard, had the same issue, if they had other counties or whoever reaching out to them to ask for their opinion on, um, on paying that out or if it should still be denied because they continued, they made that mistake or, you know. And, and they'll just say they would look at it and see what they thought too. But they had actually not heard of it or the person I talked to had not heard, heard about it.
Concerning the school, I had a board, I had a board member come to say, they, they checked into their records according, they're asking the city handling. And their, their sales taxes are, and they're thinking that our sales tax should be up.
It's not. We, we were down from FY twenty-two to FY twenty-three by about fifty to sixty thousand. I mean.
So it could be up in the city, but still we down countywide, could it?
Absolutely, good. There's more business outside the city. So I mean, yeah, it could, you know, the rest of the.
But you still got to pay county and city taxes. So you, like, I have to pay county and city tax together.
But just because, just because the, the sales tax from the county was probably higher as well in the city, it doesn't mean for outside that area that was, it could have dropped enough to make the difference.
They're concerned that the ratio is just isn't making sense. And I'm, and I'm not, I'm not getting on, I'm just saying that's what their concern is. And he come to talk to me and, and I, and, and, you know, I, I did, I, I think we all know that people are buying more other ways too, so.
Well, like, well, I must tell with Rodney, they did not change over Avenue.
Did they not?
No, they're still, and I think though there might be something different there going on because they're still collecting the city's taxes, and ours now being collected by the state.
And if anything, ours should be actually better than it would have been because the state actually charges less on the collecting. The fees are actually less. But I did send over, um, a list to them that has every month that we've received because we actually mail a check to the, um, Board of Education for their half of the sales tax. I always send a, or a page, one page report that shows how much was collected to the county, and then literally write in there half of it, and then send them a check for that. So, they're seeing exactly what we're getting each month. They also are still getting some from Avenue because we still get some from Avenue. And then, um, of course, they get some from, from, from the judge office as well. They send them their half and we get our half. So, they should be pretty much identical.
Mr. Hendricks.
Are they accountable for that check that we just signed? I mean, they're saying they don't, they don't think they get it. Well, the hundred seventy one thousand fixes that goat in the mail, so they had to sign that check, haven't they?
That might make a difference.
They didn't hear it here yet.
Well, I, and I just wonder, you know, I know we made a choice to move from Avenue to, I just wonder if the state's more, is, is, is aggressive as Avenue is at collecting taxes.
I never found it, Avenue to be especially aggressive.
Avenue was crap. Remember the deal we had up there in the two oh five? They never would even send them a letter saying, hey, I paid no taxes.
And I know that with, with math, if you pay by the twentieth, you didn't discount, you didn't get that with Avenue. So, that, that could be.
Well, you know, the, the thing with Avenue, I mean, with the state, we have to cut a check to the Board of Education. So, that leaves us holding the bag, and I, 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 I don't like holding the bag. You know, I like it when Avenue, I wish the state would cut their check.
I wish they would too. I mean, that would certainly make for less accounting work on our end and, you know, the, the time ever could do that, but.
Well, you get documentation from the state exactly what they send. You send them a copy split, but there's no sales tax in any of these businesses that might be coming in. Or, or exempt, wouldn't have any exempt sales tax for you. Right? Not there. Any equipment or stuff might be, not that much.
Were there not some abatements that's still out there? We still have some abatements that are still out there.
Some property taxes. I think the sales tax portion done run out. They're covering a good time they went on that. Like out there, remember, they only had, was it eighteen months or something?
Yeah, building, uh, what building?
Fourteen year? What was love's?
We didn't, we didn't give no sales tax.
I think that was, um.
I don't wanna give any, any money, more than lost any money out there, so you have.
Yeah.
You know, we didn't, we didn't match another money.
But then actually.
Are you thinking, are you thinking, did they got some abatements on their, on building?
Uh, they don't, they did some abatements with love's.
On the initial building, but not beyond that, right?
Not no sales tax. Not, not no sales tax being sold after, if they were buying some stuff, I think that'd have been something we can do.
Did they not have some on the gas?
Not on gas, but there was that special tax on this.
Abatement on.
But love is beyond that. I think some of the gas tank spilling that, but there was no sales tax.
Yeah, you can't collect it off gas, so.
And I think that's.
Gas is completely.
They, they may have had, they, the city can give abatements without us, based on us. There may have been abatements on the sales tax of some of their building supplies, but that would already be done and spent.
There's a time limit on that. It's may not run except a year or eighteen months or something like.
I have the last check going out. This last check going out, maybe that's gonna bring it. Can you look back, I mean, we get this next check, just look and see what we paid them last year, because we had already changed over for last year, just to sort of see what their number is and send them last year to this number.
I have, um, the, what the dates I ran for them were our fiscal year, and I sent her over everything that we had collected. So, we started last year with Alabama Park Revenue in December. That's the time period. So, they have, everything before that was Avenue, and then, of course, there's still a little bit in Avenue, but most of it is Alabama Park Revenue now. And I sent her all those numbers by, by the month to show, you know, what, what had been collected. And then I ran a total. Ours was a little different than theirs, but it's, if they're on calendar year, then that would be why.
Well, the, the check for a hundred seventy one thousand, is that in twenty three, or is that on any twenty four?
That's in twenty four. We've already.
So, they done got all.
We've had in October, we've had in October, November, already for, for, um, twenty four.
Maybe that's what you're looking at.
That's not gonna help.
But they don't have the December number yet. I mean, the, the one that would have been for November sales tax, they don't have that yet. Because once the, once the month is over, the very next eight, eight.
That may be how they're looking at it though. That may be how they're looking at it, the fiscal year.
And then we.
I bet you know how they're.
I broke mine down by month. I can easily say that.
Well, she should, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I'm, where do you get it? I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I'll do whatever they ask me to do, other, you know, other than what I, what I can do. I give them as much detail as I can.
You can go on to the check.
And I'm gonna check. Start cutting in our, our, our sales tax. Okay, um, and like I said, I'm just working on financials and that kind of thing right now. Um.
Mr. Hendricks.
The web page for the construction cost of highways, are we ready to put that on the website?
Is it not on there yet? Cause I gave Crystal last year to her, last week, and told her.
I didn't look.
I haven't looked either. She said she's put it on there, but she does put it on there, yeah.
You wanna look through some? Somebody came.
We talked about lodging tax a few months ago. Were we, did we get a chance to look at any of that?
I haven't looked. See how much it is. Um, I'll follow back and call that and see.
I mean, yeah, we was talking about, we don't find some of these beds, dresses are paid on lodging tax. We need, we need to do something.
Wouldn't that be like a compliance? I can check on it. I mean.
Well, the license, uh, can we get a list of the license, be it, if they're licensed, they're running a show, then we should be able to get a list of them. And then, once you get the list, we just can't go over the door and knock and say, hey, you run the B and B. We need to get the rest of them, that's right.
What you can do is how I'm saying who was doing the B and B, you pull it up online. It shows you all these lists in Cleveland County that's doing B and Bs.
Airbnb, Airbnb or B and B?
I mean, there's a lot of them. I found one.
What is on there?
On channel thirty, uh, thirty, that I never even dreamed was that.
So, what I'm saying, we got that list, that list we're talking about, then we transfer it over to Lee, and then give it to some compliance officer and go out there and bump on the door.
So, what are they supposed to have? You talk about this business license.
Well, they're supposed to pay taxes. So, you can basically, they will come in and ask for their, uh, payables and how long they've been in business, and if they've been doing it for five years or ten, then they owe back lodging tax for ten years. That's just the way it works. Guarantee this is the way it works. They come to my house knocking on the door. Just Toby and Melly, it's only two lodgers I have.
How, how old are we doing on a, on a compliance level? How can I do that?
I don't think you can.
I go check this.
You can check it, and once you know which ones are not paying, they're reported at the state. You have the state.
That's about.
They have.
Which, which bill?
We just need to identify which ones are not paying.
The lodging tax is always separate from sales tax. When you get a bill, it.
The lodging tax still comes from Avenue. They still collect that. But if they, if I, if I have a list of them, I can, I can certainly.
I thought lodging tax ended at the end of twenty three fiscal year.
We're getting, we're still getting some.
Cause they were supposed to end that for a period on Avenue. We need to go back and look at that.
I'll go check mine. Um, the, um, but if we, we have a list of the businesses, you know, we can at least make sure that they're getting that lodging tax. Now, I know if they're actually listed like through Airbnb or some of the actual, you know, companies that do that, they collect that, that lodging tax that actually is paid, so. You're not gonna have an issue with it. It's just like an individual that's putting it out on their own, their own little website or whatever.
So, will this be all right if we get through this year, the exemption law kind of stuff, and then we put them on this comparison year without, without?
Well, the only thing I'd like to add to it, it might not be that he has to be waiting for that. Once you pull up your list, what you just typed in of all the B and Bs in Cleveland County, all you need to do is go to your list of people that's paying. And then, once they're not, then we turn it over to the state to contact those people for the money. It might have to be backed up.
It, it, it would depend on what we see when we compare those.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. So, just pick them together.
Yes, sir, you're so smart.
Yes, and I guess this is more a statement than a question. So, we don't have the jail housing headwind contract signed, and we don't have the JSC contract signed.
No. Mr. Oden has actually sent our, the cleaned up version of inmate housing agreement with the parks taken out that are not supposed to be, that they didn't want in there. I just have not had time to read or print it out and see if, you know, to think it'll work now. Um, I will do that, and I'll make sure that, um, mayor gets a whole, you know, copy of it and everything. Maybe, maybe we can get everybody on the same page before we go get the second insurance this time and make sure we're all good with it.
And I think I sent the JSC agreement around to all of you, and I haven't brought it back from anybody.
He just needs to read it.
So, everybody reading and saying, saying, you.
But you had a update on the lawsuit. Which I know it's all jumped up, and it's probably gonna throw out there and say, I know that they.
I haven't heard anything about it.
Actually, I don't think it's a suit. It's just a.
It's just a claim.
Clean letter at this point, maybe not false suit.
It's a claim, and it, I mean, it does lose the amount that they want and that kind of thing, but it's just sort of what they shot a quarter, quarter then or something, trying to see what you'll do about it, but um, without great remains and things like that, I think it's nowhere right now.
Any other questions, please? Lee?
Last week, the rebuild Alabama grant came out. That's the two hundred fifty thousand dollar, uh, grant that has a February first deadline. As it stands, I paid it for two requests. Uh, ours requested sixty six from seventy eight to thirty five, which is one of the, we have applied for in the past. And Terry has requested Camaro ten from thirty six to ninety six. A little something different this year with that grant, so it is a two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant, but I have added a second portion of that to where if Camaro wanted to do a fifty fifty match, they would go up to three hundred fifty thousand dollars for that hundred thousand dollar. I did, but that's, that's.
I messed up.
It's just one grant.
It's one grant.
We put up a hundred, we get three more hundred.
We get three hundred fifty.
So, what one is in there?
That is, that is a add, that is an add on part. And so, with both, with both projects.
Is it gonna be three hundred fifty on top of the two hundred fifty, or the two hundred fifty just gonna go three hundred?
The two fifty definitely.
Well, if we're gonna do a hundred thousand on top of it, then that's a fair money, right? Cause the, the two hundred fifty, there's no ask. The first two hundred fifty are.
But you would be, you'd be three hundred fifty from the grant plus a hundred thousand for the project for a total of. So, it won't be your project, whether the two fifty you're looking at doing leveling and patching. If you put a hundred thousand too, then you'd be looking at being able to service that.
Then if everything fell in order, it'd be four. It's Kyle.
I know, you're doing it.
The calls I've called.
No exceptions are coming out.
I tell you what happened. I called her by the wrong name, and Kenny turned to me and said, I better not call him previous terms.
Cause you knew I was gonna say that.
I won't bear this behavior.
Of course, the project that I've, that I've put in before, you know, they don't do it every year. They kind of skip. But we have completed half of that project already. So, that is completing the other half of the project of sixty six. Where I received the grant three years ago. So, I'm just waiting to finish up that project.
He knows that, right?
We all.
Mr. Hendricks.
If one on ten is finishing up a project that was done ten years ago, that the, the talent that never got done, so. If you're gonna look at finishing a project, I'm just as far in the sea as, uh.
Could we flip it for now?
Yeah, it's, I'm just saying. I mean, I got seven.
Heads, heads are away, heads are away.
I've got a lot of houses on that.
All right, anything else for Lee?
Well, I need a decision. I gotta have something, I gotta have something to do. I need to know which way to go.
You gotta have a decision or not?
Yeah, I got a February first deadline. I prefer I have to do it the last two weeks of January.
We need to add a, a resolution? You need a resolution?
If that's, if that's a resolution, add a decision, yes.
So, what would your resolution say?
I need some authorization, man. So, I need, I need, I need authorization to apply for the rebuild Alabama grant for the blank project. And, and to, uh, and to, if we're going to do the hundred thousand dollar match and.
Split it for both projects?
So, that's what we did. I need to apply for a grant for a blank project. If we're gonna put a hundred thousand dollar match to it, then we need to put a hundred thousand dollar.
Can you pin something?
Right.
Or say that.
Would, if we got the four fifty, would that do the leveling and patching on both of them and not doing resurfacing?
Uh, yeah.
Why don't we just do it and say Camaro ten and what'd you say, sixty six? Leveling and patching project. Could you do it that way?
Can I combine them together as one project?
You couldn't combine it. You don't like your words. It's two roads.
Uh, it's two roads. I don't think, I'm gonna say that, cause I ain't looked at that. I don't think we can do that, but I think it's made for one project, one.
Okay, so, so. Hang on.
Yes, sir, you got it.
Just wanna make sure you give me.
Yes, sir, you got it.
Uh, so, the ten projects, so the projects, what we got on the books, we'll be passing projects for.
So, what you, what you got is the one that I applied for the last two years with Laura, which is sixty six, which is seventy eight to thirty five. Uh, that's about four miles worth of road. And then Terry's is, uh, Camaro ten, which is from Highway forty six up to Camaro ninety six, um, which is about three and a half miles.
Might be a distance, right, Mom?
All right, Lou. Mr. Hendricks.
Instead of calling out, bro.
Mr. Hendricks.
She has, she has put in for this for the last two years, so I think it's about my time.
I'm, excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
I put in for the last two years because my road needs it. I'm about to lose that road if I don't do something. We don't have, I, I can't ever get the funds to do it. So, if something's not done, we've already, Hydrate's already started caving in. It is God to be done. So, yes, I was trying to get it through a grant without putting it out, pulling it out with general fund. But that grants, I'm still asking for.
All right, so do we have, uh, any conclusion here, any, any direction? Lee and I have a lady in your lap because you brought this up.
I mean, that's a chance.
Mr. Hendricks.
What'd you say?
Lipcomb?
I thought I said lipcomb. And we only got one grant, and everybody knows we're gonna be, man, Rodney's sitting here, gonna be in the middle of this, so.
I don't have a comb. Somebody flip them with her comb.
They got tip.
If you win, then I got it. They're gonna call it.
I'll, you call it, please, Kyle. I'll let you call it, Miss Cowan.
Let it hit the floor. Let it hit the floor.
Let it hit the floor?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
You good with that?
I don't care.
What do you, what do you?
Hold your color.
All right, perfect, I will, Laura.
I will.
Ain't no way that we can get tomorrow, I can see you blew it up then.
But just remember, next year.
I got, I, I can't have a bank, I'm not gonna draw a national savings. My, yeah, I've been burning the line, if that's what I'm telling, I'm telling.
We're primed, don't we? Let's wait till they get your credit.
That's the best way out there. We still got to vote on gas, the resolution again.
Still gotta put resolution.
So what I put together is a resolution to authorize the county engineer to apply for the rebuild Alabama grant to be applied towards County Road sixty-six project to include up to a one hundred thousand dollar match as needed.
Y'all read the resolution, wanna add this?
Sure.
That we add.
Sir.
All in favor of adding, say aye. Four ayes. I'll entertain a motion to pass it now.
I'm not voting.
What, Mr.?
No.
You took a insult, you used the four ayes.
Oh, no, no, sir, I, I, I have four votes, is what I mean. I'm gonna give you trouble, all in favor?
Read the, the motion.
Resolution to authorize the county engineer to apply for the rebuild Alabama grant to be applied towards County Road sixty-six project to include up to a one hundred thousand dollar match as needed.
He made a motion, I second it.
Okay.
I'm gonna vote you.
We voted to add.
Yeah, now we're voting to, uh.
We need to pass it, and we need a motion to pass it.
He made a motion to pass it, and I second it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? You, you aye?
There you go, one, it's gonna have to be three ayes, uh, just, uh.
Oh, I said aye.
Okay, you just make a note that next year, we don't have to vote.
We're not voting.
Next year is another year.
You got anything else, Lee?
I do. Oh, yeah. So, uh, does it have to do with any money?
Yes, it is.
Well, you can just put it back in your book.
So, and I think y'all got the email too, there's an email coming, I had several federal grants on it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, two of which kind of stood out, the, the first one there, which is the Raze Grant, and then there's a second one further down there, that it's a railroad crossing elimination grant. I bring those up to say, I know we've talked about it in the past, but I think we need to look at getting a good grant writer on board to apply for stuff like this. I've asked around, and, and the guy that I have been referred to is Terry Acuff with Community Consultants that are out of Huntsville. Heard good things about him. But that was kind of, I would like to throw that out there, to have somebody to apply for this kind of stuff.
I got some questions, but what amount should we pop?
It's, well, like the Raze Grant.
Other thing also, how much is gonna cost for the grant writer?
Oh, that, was that a, was that what you said? Is that what you found out?
What, what?
That's what I had to figure out.
Okay. Well, I mean, we, uh.
Just start talking, start talking.
We need somebody.
We gotta have somebody.
Yeah, we need it, most of them there.
I don't think we need to have the information on the grant writer and what it's gonna cost if we have actual closure.
That's gonna leave mine, not what.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hendricks.
Is this, is this the same ones we tried to get last year?
Well, that's one that I had recommended, um, after we talked about all the trouble that we have in East Alabama. We talked about community consultants, I actually know a different person that's with community consultants, and I've dealt with them before, and they, they've got it together. They're highly recommended, and I think you had somebody that.
They're good, but they turned us down last year.
They turned us down before, um, because they were just completely maxed out on what they could do, but since then, I've heard that they are taking more compliance.
They've got more people working now.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
We, we're on a deadline on this deal, and maybe that's gotta be by, toward February.
Yeah, these grants here are in February.
Yeah, they've been working on it now.
And part of them is railroad crossing.
One of them is a, one of them is a railroad crossing designed to replace railroad bridges that.
Because I'm, I'm in a bind right now. I don't know if some of y'all are aware of it, but the one in Edwards Field, we've had problems after problems with them having, you know, LeFond had to go in there and put something more permanent because they were moving the barricades and using the bridge. But the problem too is when you go, that, that road that we helped them form, there's no lights. It's so dangerous, and half the time, at probably at least once a week, the train blocks everybody, and either they can't get home, and this is for hours at a time.
So you're blocking that bridge, it's closed, or, or, or crossed?
The crossings, because the crossing is.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out if we're talking about crossing or a bridge now.
See, the bridge.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
We, we need that, we need that bridge replaced.
Is this the guy mentioned that he, he'll just charge enough cost and then?
No, that guy recommended this guy for, uh, Robert does this small, small type of stuff, but he's not, he said this is more than he wants.
Mr. Hendricks.
You don't have any idea what it's gonna charge? I think, some of them I've talked to does a flat fee, like on a yearly deal, or they do like a percentage of the grant. And I don't, I don't know which place is the best way to go, but.
You think in the past, is it how they would do it?
In the past, what we've done, the, the one time that I actually dealt with them on a grant, they did it as a percentage, percentage came out, as we got the grant. Because they actually had to apply for it a couple of times, which happens with percentage of grants, which is what we got at the time.
We're getting up to, uh, I think we said.
But what, I know, I know, we're trying to find, figure out, because February is deadline day. So do you have any idea what to say? I mean, it's already.
It's hard to say, it's hard to say. I don't think we have, I don't think we have a resolution yet.
Okay.
I just, I need, I need to talk to the guy, and get the, it's kind of when the four I called and said, hey, would you be interested, just know that everybody's kind of going to get.
Is everybody on board? Anybody got a problem? That makes two back for me.
I still don't wanna promise myself, you know, what I'm gonna do.
Yes, Mr. Hendricks, guys.
But if, if they talks to before the end of the week, and they don't wanna do it, I've got another person that, I mean, that we can look at.
If someone look at both of them, it sounds helpful, I can sure.
So if we wait until our next meeting, this one will stump in February.
We need to talk about that too.
We didn't, I mean, we didn't decide who, but then we need to come back before the end of the year, and authorize them to go after the grants, so.
Um, do you have anything else?
One more question.
Trap, be paid, mate.
This is quick, and I really have, I might, I might just, uh, how do you get one surplus? Kind of, one surplus, that's a quick one. So, now, this, this can, this I guess can't wait until next month, but just, I wanted to make sure on that, to see how, the old patch truck, we surplus back in October. I ran it through GoDills twice, have got some bids on it, um, the, the truck chassis is in good shape, what's on backwood is what's done. And so what I've got decided to do, gonna do is we're gonna pull the tanks off the back, go replace it with a white tank, make it a good white truck, and, and surplus.
But you can do that.
Next month, we'll find, I just kind of didn't know if I could do that.
We'll find the, find the. Yes.
Was that just a resolution about sale, or was it?
It was a surplus.
Was it, you like to, you like to?
We figured I'll get a lot of consent information.
Mr. Odin, you have anything? All right, old business, none? Discussion items? Here's something we need to think about, January the first is our work session, it's a Monday, it's the holiday, so work session on Tuesday at three, good to everybody? Be the second. At three. The fifteenth, Martin Luther King Day also is a holiday. Everybody give it the sixteenth at four thirty? Everybody give that? All right, just make know of that. Any other discussion items? Merry Christmas to all of you.
Appreciate you, and thank you. Hey, I'm not going to the district meeting, I think about LTS, they probably need to, those are named and have.
I'm talking about the one. Of course, I've definitely made the closest one.
There is guests.
In the states, it's the closest one.
What they have finished. So, Jim, you.
No, my favorite's good, the launch one, I like it.
I'll entertain a motion to.
I'm very much.
Deserve it.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.